Okay, call the members of the planning board to honor October 22, 2024.
21st.
21.
Oh, 21. Okay. Okay, first, scheduled public hearing. Continued open public hearing for a special permit floodplain for 68, 70, and 72 Platter Street. MAP 14 parcels 19, 3, 3A multifamily residential above floors with office on the first floor.
All right, Chairman, you have an email, little copy in your packet dated Thursday, October 17, from Bill Hannigan. It's kind of a long email chain, but what it boils down to is they want to continue this until they have their new flood maps, and he thinks that's going to be January 6. So he wants to continue to January 6.
Second. I have a motion made, do you want a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to continue to January 6.
At 6:30.
At 6:30. Let's move.
Okay. Do I have any further discussion? Okay, you will not call for a vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion carries.
Make a motion to move to the regular meeting. Seconded.
Taken.
Good move.
Yeah.
We'll get through the whole thing.
Call to honor.
Patrick Perla.
Here.
Paul Weiser.
Here.
South Chaconne.
Yeah.
Carol Vittoriasso, excuse, Tom Kerrigan, excuse, Jason Parry.
Here.
Dave Beyer.
Here.
John Sizemore.
Yeah. Minutes previous meetings. Uh, none. Plan submitted, none. All business, special permit floodplain for 68, 70, 72 Platter Street. MAP 14 parcels 19, 3, and 3A multifamily residential above floors with office on the first floor. This has been continued to January 6.
Can't do 4.2 yet.
Can't do that, I got 6:30. I get 6, no, around 6:35.
No communications. New business.
Okay, 6.0. Definitive subdivision modification for some of the states for MAP 423-3 parcels 11 to 33. Continued communication items from 819, 24, 916, 24, 10724. Vote to make determination is deemed a major modification and vote accordingly pending advice on legal. So.
All right, the board can't really move on this tonight because we're still waiting on legal counsel. I got an email from Amy Quessel, and she said that a lot of more information came in. It's going to take her some time to have her determination on that one.
Okay, until it be continued.
So we'll, I'll keep it on the agenda for November.
Okay.
November 8th, 4th. Yeah.
Okay. 6.2, Mary Avenue, definitive subdivision, planning director to provide update to board.
All right, I've contacted the DPW, and I requested that they complete inspection and go through the punch list that the consultant provided two years ago detailing the outstanding work that had to be completed and outline for us what's left to be done and the cost amount. It's already been estimated line item, so we just have to add that up and determine what's left over. So I'm still waiting on the DPW.
So they already spent money that we got?
They, we didn't get the bond, they never gave us the bond. We got the estimate two years ago for the bond, and they never gave us any money or.
He's going to ask for an extension pretty soon, did he get an extension?
He got an extension at the last meeting.
Okay.
But now we're waiting on DPW to say how much is left, and it's the same process with Willard Street. We have to see how, get an evaluation from the assessor to see how much the land is worth.
We have that.
For Mary Avenue?
That's for Mary Avenue.
We have for Willard.
Yeah, we've got to do what we did for Willard.
We have to do what we did for Willard, but right now I'm waiting on the DPW.
For both of them.
Yeah. No, no, the Willard's different.
Willard's.
But it's already 6:35, so we could, if the chairman pleads.
Yeah, we might as well go into, because it doesn't make any difference. So that's just to be continued. Okay, 6.3, request for release of covenant for metal lands.
We're going to go to 6:35, open, continued open public hearing.
No, we can do that after, why don't we go to?
You're going to do that after?
Yeah, we can continue this, right?
Finish the communications?
Request release of covenant on metal lands of Willard. The definitive subdivision map 398-3B lot 1, map 398-3 lot 2, map 398-3 lot 3, map 398-3 lot 18, map 398-3 lot 19, map 398-9 lot 20, map 398-3 lot 21, map 398-3 lot 22, map 398-3 lot 26, and map 398-3 lot 27. Board to review request to make decision to lot. What we've done here, you've got a letter.
Looks like we can release 10 lots. Do you want a motion?
Yeah, what we did, a motion to release a covenant on these 10 lots, and I'll just explain what we did and how it works out is we have the land to do it with $1.5 billion. The complete would have to be done. The value of the land, we worked with the assessors, and the work to be done is the value of the land remaining 17 lots is worth more than the work to be done. So we hold a covenant on the 17 lots. They'll do the 10 lots, and sometime later they'll come, release the, maybe another five or whatever they want. We'll again review the work to be done, and when we get to a point, it's usually down three or four, when we get to the point at the end, we'll then get a bond to make sure that things are finished. So we'd be in order to make a motion to release the lots as read.
So these are including the?
She's requesting.
Hold in how many lots?
17.
After we release these?
After we release, there's 27 in total.
And what was the value in the 17, do you remember?
17, yeah, the total is like 2.5.
2,380,000.
Okay, all right, so we got enough, we got over.
If you got more.
It's all detailed in my memo, if you read my memo.
Covenant on lots, 10 lots, lots 1, 2, 3, 18, 19, 21, 22, 26, and 27.
Okay, I have a motion, do you want a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Chair and honor, call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll say, I'll say no, motion carries.
So did you detail that you were releasing lots 1, 2, 3, 18, 19, you did?
Yeah, everyone number noted.
We're so fast.
Okay.
Well, he just did the lot numbers, went through, and then he, it's the same map.
It's map and lots along the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Flowchart, draft definitive subdivision flowchart, our plan board to review, provide feedback. What we did, we're trying to help people and to understand what we're doing and what they have to do, there's a lot of questions on the process. So we get together and Elizabeth and I started this, just to get started, okay, the draft, you might say, to go through what your process is and your division and where they have to get quotes and covenants and all those things. So I want to go through the whole process, and then if you see any changes, we also want to put some times in here, you know, the maximum, like the two years that you have from the time, and then define that, that's the date we approve it, and two years from the date we approve it, you need, you have to get an extension. So, first part is easy, developer files a complete application. Then we approve the application for a two-year period, three-year period from the data from the MyLAW.
Yeah, our ordinance is, it's.
So that's what, okay, so that you, we give them approval, and then they have time to finish the MyLAW and get it filed, and once the MyLAW is filed, then they have three years from that time, okay? If there's, if it's, if he's not done, he requests one-year extensions. So if he's not ready for approval, okay, then he has to come back from one, every year for an extension, okay? And then he goes from, then there, developer files a covenant, you know, when he gets to the point, and with the registry of deeds, so that's, that's done when it gets released. That means that we now have, we're holding all the deeds, okay? When the infrastructure is complete, he requests a release, and that should be release of the covenant. Okay, specific lots.
So he can live in the amount of John, a one-year extensions, as long as he does it every year?
Yeah, he would have to come in every year.
But he can continue doing that and add infinitum if he wants.
Well, not really, okay, state law says seven, see, this is showing the procedure, this is not official, and, but, you know, now we might want, a good question, might want to put in there, the states is maximum of seven years.
So seven extensions.
Yeah.
So, I mean, just a footnote on that.
Well, no, not really, you only get five.
You wouldn't even know, you wouldn't even really knew you could get more than one, on how it's written.
So maximum of five-year extension?
Yeah.
Because you're already, you've already got the three.
Two, or three.
He gets three, he gets three from the MyLAW.
Three from the MyLAW, so that's.
And seven is the number, so, okay.
So four extensions.
That's for state law, that's for zoning.
Right, that's. So do we want, we just want to change that block a little bit to make it clearer, that's all, on how many extensions they can request.
Maximum five-year extension.
There you go.
Well, in one-year increments.
That's right.
In one-year increments, to be filed by the applicant.
That is correct.
So.
But we just gave Willard Street a two-year extension. At the last meeting.
The lots already says, developer requests one-year extension.
Yeah.
Applicant is responsible for making the request, so just add sales language.
Yeah.
Requests may be renewable up to five years, or something like that, and then you're done, you have to rewrite the notice. Requests may be renewed up to five times.
Yeah, that's, you know, he can do, you know, four requests at one time.
Like I said, it was perfect, I can't repeat.
Maximum five-year extension and one-year increments, I got it.
Then that's, that was right.
Maximum five-year extension and one-year increments.
There you go.
How does the state?
One-year increments up to a maximum.
It's not really a five-year extension, it's a one-year extension.
It's a one-year extension.
I don't think I might have that.
Maximum, maximum five one-year extensions.
But the applicant must file.
Yeah.
In one-year increments, the applicant must file a one-year extension increments.
I still think the language you have is good. It's already says, request a one-year extension, applicant has to make, rather than something at the end that says.
I think, yeah.
Not rework that language, because it is a one-year extension. How does the, how does the state law impact the number of extensions?
It supersedes, I was, it says seven and eight, they said it says eight, so we probably should clean ours up and go to eight, but, so we go with the state, not going to, I'm not going to fight, fight the state and go to eight years. That all changed during the pandemic, okay, and actually started, the first extension they got was in 2008 because of the housing bubble and all that, and so then there were so many developers that were hung up that they extended it at that time, and then they did it again in 2012.
So if a developer wanted to fight us and said, said state says eight, then we'd have to give them an extra.
Yeah. So I might just go with the eight, you know.
The building inspector goes by eight too, so we should probably add to.
Yeah. That'd be good, wouldn't it, stuff?
If he, you know, we'll see how long, we're trying to tighten it up, we've had so many problems, and we're trying to, okay. The plan board hires a consultant engineer to determine finished cost, so after he completes and these, the project, okay? Now, this, this right here is a little bit where it can be divided up like we did tonight, okay, and to determine the finished cost, so we do that first, and even though he's only releasing, you know, 10 lots out of the 27, okay, we do the whole, the whole subdivision. Unless, unless we voted in, like, just to go way back, we had some very large subdivisions, and in those, we, we had a, a process where we, we, skip, planned, so that they could only do like 30, supposedly they were going to do 30 houses a year, well, that never happened, but that, you know, so each, so we had the main, but that was a vote of us, and each 30 houses almost stood alone like a separate subdivision, okay? And we have covenants for each one of the 30, and there was one covenant for the, for the whole thing, because we had to take the infrastructure for, the infrastructure for roads and has to be the entire thing, and then, then you phased it for a suite sequence. Well, it was worked out, and we did it, we got agreements, but it, because of some other problems, it just never happened, but we did do it in that, that case.
John, for that box, too, can you say the costs are to be incurred by the applicant? For the. It says that, it says that in the ordinance.
We're not doing the, we're just doing, you know, hey, here's a, here's a sketch, you know, that you basically hit the highlights, but leave the detail, what we refer in it, you know, in all cases refer to, you know, subdivision regulations for detail. Okay? Because there's a lot more detail than we have on the one page. We're just trying to do this and say, somebody say, hey, you know, this is what you're going to do, this is the process, so the no surprises, oh, I didn't know, you know, they're supposed to read the book, but, I don't know, sometimes.
Room and box.
Yeah.
A room and box for forwards, cost incurred by applicant.
Yeah. We approved, the engineer does it, we approve the cost, and we release the covenant on specific lots, okay? And then, and then we said we require the bond, and that's on the, when the, and we're going to define that a little bit, I looked at that as, just like we did today, is define it, it's 150, to finish, when the value.
150% of the cost to finish.
The cost to finish, right.
So if it's $1 million, they have to put a bond in for $1.5 million.
That's correct.
So maybe just put that in.
Yeah, and because it required, so that's what, and the value is the lot value.
Yep.
Okay, and that's determined by the assessors, okay? So, now, they had come up with us before, and there's, there's two different lot values, there's, there's your retail value and your assessed value, and then you got to be careful because they had, they came to us with the value of the land as a undeveloped, as a subdivision, well, the value of undeveloped subdivision is a lot lower, so they had come in for that at $79,000 per lot. So this is on a fully, fully developed, because at this point, you're, if you have water and sewer, and your basic roads are done, and your most of your infrastructure is done, so your lot has now become the developed subdivision, and the value jumps, in their case, up to 140 as an estimate.
Who's the audience for this?
What's that?
Who's the audience for this?
It's all in the.
Who's this for? Who's this?
It's for us.
Because I can't imagine any non-experts looking at this and saying, boy, that really clarifies things, we're in hell.
I hate to say it.
Those that know what they're doing, they don't do this anyway, so I'm just curious why we're doing it.
I hate to say it, there are enough people that come to us and say, what is the process that I have to go through?
And then if you gave them this, you think that would clarify?
That would get them started.
Okay. I mean, if you gave me this, I'd say, I give up. I'm serious, okay? Or I'll have my engineer go and figure it out for me, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I just, I can't imagine a person coming in and finding this useful. And so, again, if, if we want to do something with the general public, then make it understandable to the general public, but this would, you know, you got to go through this way and that way, and then back over and around, and.
Yeah, well, Paul, I think he's doing it for us.
Then I'm in the wrong place too, because this isn't making it unclear for me.
I know, it's just, it was an idea, because we've had a number of people that, why do you do this, why do you do that, I said, we'll do it, it's, you know.
Then maybe just lay it out step by step.
They read the book, they don't, they don't get it.
I think this is really confusing, because I got, I have to go across, and then down and back over, and it's like I'm doing a maze.
The layout of the, of this thing has to be changed.
Ah, this.
Okay, doing a flowchart, you know, this is the first cut of a flowchart.
This is the rough draft.
It's a rough, very rough, so we just wanted to pass it by, and then come up with a rough draft, and then, then we'll pretty it up, make it readable.
Okay.
Okay, then we all.
Godspeed.
Request a bond release, then we can hire a consultant, and again, that's at their cost, to determine cost to complete, and, and a lot of those things, they're various as we, as we, you know, whether it's private property, and that's what I find, a lot of these guys are saying, oh, it's going to be a private road, and they're trying to get around some of the boarding, by saying it's a private road, and then never.
And then 20 years later, they're going to ask if the city.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
They will, they'll be long gone.
Yeah, they'll be long gone.
The homeowners will ask.
So, so we're going to have to, so we're, we're trying to define that better, and so they can't do that, it's sort of a, sort of a loophole that we have today, okay? I had sort of covered, but there's no teeth in that. Okay? I think the rest is pretty much self, you know, self-explanatory, and, and it brings it to the point where the developer has to request, okay, the city for a street approval. We can't do that, okay, so we bring everything that's done, and then it gets turned into the city, and then it gets rid of it. So, it's a rough draft, we're working with it. Let's go back to the hearings. A second hearing, continued public hearing. For petition for 25 redimensionals regulations in RB and RC districts.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, it's been back before you again.
Name for the record?
I am Joseph Boyle, Principal Planner at the Monarch's Regional Planning Commission. I have been working with the Housing Committee on zoning changes, and we are back before you tonight with one that you have seen before, the proposals to change dimensional requirements in the RB and RC districts. This was before the City Council, and, long story short, they think it was just too big a bite, and so we're proposing to scale this back significantly, scale it back both in terms of how complicated the changes are, and also in terms of how, the scale of the changes. Where previously I had come in proposing a whole table, eliminating a lot of the rosin here, they were more comfortable with a proposal to keep the table in the basic format that it's in, particularly retain the per-unit square footage, retain a per-unit, per square footage requirement for multifamilies, multifamily dwellings in the RB, and they were to be, and the proposal now is to reduce certain dimensional requirements in the table while keeping it in the same format. So the proposal now, that I'm suggesting now, is in the RB, by right multifamily is currently 8,500 square feet per unit, and I'm proposing to lower that to 7,000 square feet per unit. By right multifamily currently has a 120-foot minimum lot frontage, I'm proposing to lower that to 50. And then the special permit multifamily, you're allowed to reduce the number of square feet per unit by special permit in the RB district, it's currently, you may reduce it to 5,000 square feet per unit, I am proposing to allow the board to lower that to 4,000 square feet per unit, and once again, to reduce the lot frontage, you're currently allowed to reduce it from 120 feet to 100 feet by special permit, I'm proposing to lower that one to 50 as well, creating a 50-foot, yeah, a uniform 50-foot frontage requirement in the RB.
Where it says 30 for special permit multifamily, huh? That's 350 as well?
That's maximum impervious coverage.
Maximum impervious, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, I didn't mean.
And in the RC, similarly in the RC district, we are reducing that number, this is on the back page, reducing this from, reduce the minimum lot area in the RC from 5,000 non-wetland square feet per unit to 4,000 per unit. I was, I realized listening to this now, it's a little bit ambiguous, I don't know why, the RC currently has language non-wetland in its square footage, and the RB doesn't, but in the interest of making this as minimal a change as possible in order to facilitate its passage, I didn't see a reason why that needed to change. So I would, I would, so just so that this is clear, the proposal in the RC is to change from 5,000 non-wetland square feet per unit to 4,000 non-wetland square feet per unit, keep that non-wetland square feet.
To keep the non-wetland.
Yes.
They still have to come in for a site plan approval, ten patents, basically, right? If they need it.
So there's a typo on this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's say.
Where?
A unit to 4,000 non-wetland square feet.
Yeah, 4,000.
Well, no, they wouldn't come to us, I mean, unless it was a subdivision.
Our other covenants would change, right?
Yeah.
Aren't you at the site plan review?
Yeah.
So if it had, if it needed, let's say by adding the addition, so just curious, by adding, you know, more units, it increases the parking footprint.
It's the parking, one of your triggers is 10, 10 parking spaces.
Same parking spaces.
And there's another trigger that if you increase.
The 25% anymore.
And by, is it parking by 25% anymore?
I think so.
Yeah.
Then you're, so the site plan approved.
Right, so.
So we still have the, the preview open there.
For all but the very smallest of multifamily projects, twos to threes, and actually, it wouldn't even be twos to threes, because you have a special rule here for conversion of a two-family for one additional, so maybe a three to a four this would apply to, maybe a two to a four, and that's about as far as you'd be able to go.
Yeah, so it's really not, then the parking takes that, so we just don't want to.
We don't want to create units where there's no parking.
Yeah.
We want to make sure that they have the parking when they create units, so, site plan approval.
Site plan approval, plus.
Or special permit, they have to come before, so that special permits, it's too, without going through the, yeah, surface. I'm just talking a lot, you know, I do have a lot to it. You're the frontage guy, 52, okay, we do.
So you're proposing to change.
It's not much.
And the lot frontage. And the lot frontage to 50 in both cases?
What did they, did they talk about the lot frontage?
They didn't get too much into the lot frontage, I have to say.
Yeah.
They didn't, they had this document and they didn't squeal about it. We had that, we had the new document at that. Because we had discussed what it was going to be at the previous meeting of the planning board. So then I had a document that reflected that for submission to the City Council.
Right.
And this is them sending it back to you. They didn't give me feedback on the lot frontage.
Okay.
Okay. My thinking on that, you know, this larger lot frontage for multifamily is meant, I assume it's intended to be more protective of the neighborhood. But I'm thinking about design. A neighborhood which is house and house and house along the street. And they've got their frontage, relatively modest frontages, 50 or a little bit over 50. And then a, I'm thinking about where there's a big piece of land, an acre, a couple acres piece of land. Maybe a pork chop lot, maybe it's not formally a pork chop lot, but it goes back and gets big in the back. So that we're talking about potentially, or it's not a pork chop lot, it's just a lot, and it does have a lot of frontage along the street. That, that type of larger-scale development with a great big frontage and an entrance and things like that can be itself out of scale in an already established neighborhood. And that building at a smaller scale like that can be, is itself more respectful of what's already there. In established, especially historic neighborhoods that have this character, building in a way that's consistent with the old things that are already there is respectful towards them. And it makes it appear like, yes, the way this neighborhood was built was built right, and this is a good thing. And if you build dramatically different from what's there in your neighborhoods, it sends the opposite message. The way this was built in the old days isn't right. And we have to build something different in order for it to be okay. So I tend to like, when we're talking about established areas and there's infill, to match what's there and not demand something that's much bigger and different.
Yeah, I think it was meant to, at one time, to restrict some of this stuff, you know?
Yes.
There was no question about that, so... That's why, you know... And you have to, if you've got 50 foot, when you're really, you've got to allow at least 15 and 20 foot for your driveway. You know, it doesn't leave much for anything else. You also look at, you know, 100 really isn't that big when you're looking at your driveway entrances. And you have a bigger unit and you're going to have, you can't just have a 12-foot driveway. You've got to have a 20-foot driveway. So that's really chews up, you know, a good portion of your frontage.
Plus the setbacks.
You know, and then your setbacks to that. So, I don't know, you know? Like you said, the City Council really didn't deal with the frontage. I don't know if we want to or just we'll leave it with the 120 and the 100.
Where it is, where there's already a system where there's a by right frontage which can be reduced. And we're keeping the by right minimum lot area which can be reduced by special permit. Perhaps a good answer would be to go back to having a by right frontage for multifamily and then a special permit frontage. And then have the special permit frontage for multifamily down to 50?
Well, that would be more control for sure. That would be a better way to, I think.
It wouldn't be imposing a special permit where I'm not currently proposing a special permit. But it, so if the board were interested in returning to a by right multifamily frontage and then a special permit multifamily frontage, what numbers would make sense there? It's currently 120 and 100.
120 and...
Maybe you go to 100.
You know, 180.
Yeah, 108, and then for the special permit, you go down to 100. Because, you know, Residence A is 100, right? It's 100 for frontage.
Is that right?
Eighty.
Eight, no, 80 for frontage. Eighty.
These are numbers in a vacuum to me. I'm not opposed to the change, but I would, it would be good to understand what value we would gain from this. How many new units we could potentially gain? What impact it would have?
By changing these numbers, what do we create? What opportunities do we create?
Right. How many potential new units would we gain?
Yeah.
What value would that, again, I'm not opposed to changing numbers, but by themselves, numbers don't mean anything.
Right. That's the question that they asked the other day.
Yeah. And we can...
Didn't we talk about maybe getting some examples?
And so, for a question like, for a proposal like this, our initial analysis done based on like formulas and stuff yielded unrealistically large numbers of units. Which is assuming, you know, if you're assuming maximum efficiency based on how the lots are laid out now, how many units. But that's not really how anything would get developed, and so that isn't really a useful number for you. And then you also get to the question of how many single-family homeowners in the RB district might potentially be interested in redeveloping their property for multifamily housing?
And how many units in RB and RC honestly have 120 or 100 feet of frontage? How many of those units exist in the city? How many, you know?
In the older neighborhoods, there's quite a few.
How many exist that could be...
I don't know, but you know, you get off of Pleasant Street, like Pleasant Street's RB.
Beginning of Pleasant, I think is RB up until Low Street, I think. So that's an example. What you can look at.
And most of those lots are fairly large lots in their RB, so those all could be increased. Okay? I mean, just for an instance...
I mean, I understand the point about if these numbers were intentionally created to be restrictive. It sounds like maybe we were just doing math with, you know, per unit. They have this many thousands of feet now, so let's, if they can add another unit, let's add this many thousands of feet. You know, if we're just chopping these numbers down arbitrarily, that's fine. But that would be interesting to know what we could potentially gain from it.
The problem is, is trying to, I don't know how I could come up with how many houses we could do yet. Really looking at every lot in the city and say, "What if..."
I mean, it's easy enough for me to come up with, give you the example of a 12,000 square foot lot with this. Two units are that could do this. But that isn't really the, a 12,000 square foot lot could do this. But once again, that's, that could end up with a, if we tried to apply that district-wide to get a sense of what the scale of the number of units, well, it completely depends on how many homeowners would be, are potentially interested in doing that. And that's kind of, that's kind of unknowable. In general, few people in single-family neighborhoods, either, even when they can, by right, tear down their house to put up townhouses or even add an ADU. The vast majority of single-family homeowners want to live in a single-family home and not be a landlord.
Mike Castle Street passed the church before you get to the cemetery, that, Residence C? Because those would have like a 50-foot frontage. That would be an example of, you know, 50-foot frontage. The neighborhood exists, you know, if it's an existing neighborhood. So what you're trying to do is you're trying to match existing neighborhoods like you said, Joe. But, you know, different, but how do you say that? You go the right way with one cutoff of the frontage, you know?
And the fact that, in this particular case, it might be a little bit easier because we are not, because you are trying to choose frontage numbers for multifamily, only for multifamily uses here. In neighborhood that is already, that is mostly single, or a vast majority single and two. So it is sensible and appropriate that there be a larger frontage than is allowed for the singles and the twos. Now, what we have for frontages for everything else is 50. So I think it would make sense if you didn't want even the special permit reduction to go all the way down to 50 because you thought that would be inappropriate for the neighborhood, that would make more sense.
I would think that the City Council, that would be one more thing they'll go after is the frontage. So my thought isn't to keep it consistently at 50. Actually, I'd probably use the tables that I had, except change it to 100 and then 80. That's what I, that's what my thought would be with the proposal. It's giving them not too much more to chew on. They didn't even, they didn't even...
They didn't even chew on this?
Yeah, they didn't chew on the frontage or visualize it at all, but they will, you know, they'll, yes. The next round, they will. So instead of being so dramatic, keep the 50 with 50s and then move by right multifamily to 100 and special permit to 100, to 80 for the proposal. Because you certainly know, and this is staying in the vacuum, Jason. You certainly know that there's a lot of variables here that could make a difference. But I don't think there's going to be a whole lot going on because you changed this at all in the city, you know? I just don't think it's going to happen. There's other vehicles that make much more sense for people. You buy an old building and redo it like...
Oh, like use it on Pleasant Street?
Yeah. You know, stuff like that, but...
But we did have one...
I'm sure, I don't know how you would come up with that number. But I just think give them pieces they can chew on, little by little, and see what the effect is. We're not having a drastic, big impact with those slight changes right now. And that'll give everybody something to chew on to try to get an idea of what we see. And who the trend might be.
This is an incremental change that would allow for incremental growth, which in your established residential neighborhoods is probably the type of growth that you want to encourage.
Yeah, we wanted, you know, like I was saying, we have one...
There's a lot of places for growth here. There's not a lot left.
Yeah. We had one last year on Cotton Street where it was a, what was that, a two-family house. But they had a row of large lot. They had enough room on the side in the frontage to put in a driveway into their back, backside of the house. And they put in, what was that, four? Four or five, four or five townhouses in the back. So it was almost like a pork chop. So your main house, which was your multifamily, stayed there. And then they were able to put in, they haven't done it yet, but it's approved.
Was that in RB or in RC?
Probably RC.
That's RB.
Oh, no, Cotton Street.
Cotton Street.
Cotton Street.
I'd say it's RB.
That was in front of us.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we cut them down from five to four.
Yeah.
Yeah. For density reasons.
Was that a special permit that was before you? Where you were able to cut it down?
Well, we can go by density numbers too and say, you know, lots, there aren't that many units, you know?
And then the coverage.
So we have some control in that respect.
Right. Was that a special permit or a site plan review?
No, you have to ask, I don't remember. Elizabeth said we can look it up.
I can look it up.
It was more than a year ago.
So that's a great example. How did those four units fit in this chart? That's, say that's RB, because it sounds like we're not certain. That's four single-family units? Or is that a by right multifamily? Like, what is that?
Those are multifamily. Because they're all attached.
Yeah, as long as they're attached, you can call them multifamily.
So help me with this process-wise. We're going to vote on something that we're going to send to the City Council for feedback.
This is a referral from City Council. So we had a hearing because the City Council said we want a referral from them anymore.
Right, I understand. So we're going to send it back to the City Council?
Right.
And then they're going to send it back to us?
Not this time.
They may approve it or vote it down.
Okay, so this is the final recommendation?
Yeah, that's correct.
So that would be my thought, Joe. I think you don't want to have a, you know, well, what's this when we get there? And have them blow it up for you. It's a better chance.
Yeah, I'll put the 50s, I'll put the lot frontage column back the way it was before and change that 122 and 100 to 102 and 80.
Yeah.
Uh huh.
Okay.
And then you're good.
And then you're going to add in the type where the typo was?
Yes, on the back. I don't, yeah, I don't actually have the, yeah, I'm not showing the table here because it was just one little cell that was changing. But in that cell, it says 5,000 non-wetland square feet per unit. And it's changing the number to four. But all of the text is stay. The wetland text is stay.
Okay, looks good.
All right.
All right, now we have to close the hearing.
Well, I mean, with those changes, you know, we have to make a recommendation. Oh, it's just a hearing.
Yeah, it's just a hearing.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Any discussion? General call for a vote, don't say aye. Close say no. Close and carry. Okay, now we go down to 4.2. City Council petition 5-25 redimensionals regulations in RB and RC districts. Land board to make recommendation to City Council.
And I will make a recommendation for approval with all changes we discussed tonight with the 100-foot for by right multifamily in Residence B and the 80-foot special permit multifamily in Residence B.
And the addition of...
And the addition of the non-wetland clause.
That's not even an addition as written. It is keeping that, it just wasn't clear that that was...
Yeah. I read it, and it's okay, the other ones were as well, but I'm okay. So we'll just make it consistent.
And then you're changing the 85 to 7, right? Are you 500?
Yeah, and 5 to 4.
Yes, yes. Yes, they were just describing the changes from my document.
That's right. No, so that's good. So we'll make some progress. We'll see what it looks like and maybe we'll give us some info, right?
Okay, so you'll get me a rise document soon? Because I have to get this to City Council by Thursday at noon.
Yes, that would be no problem.
Okay.
Okay. So for those changes, do I have a motion to, for those changes?
I just made a motion.
Oh, you made a motion? It was more discussion than motion, that's why.
No, no, I made a motion. Recommend approval to the City Council with the changes on the frontage back. Instead of 120 feet on by right multifamily, it's 100 and special permit on the RB, it's going to go to 80. And that's it. And then the verpage on, is going to be the same on the second page on RC.
No, you want to change it 85, 8500 to 7000?
That's already there in my amendment. He's taking changes to my amendment.
Right, your amendment, oh, okay. Sorry about that. Okay. Motion made, do you have a second?
Yes.
Have a second, all in favor, say aye. Close say no, once you carry. Sorry. Hey, I'm getting old.
No, you're doing a fine job.
Excellent.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
I was already here with MU2, right?
Yeah. That's a petition to City Council.
That's a petition to City Council.
So it'll bounce back here eventually.
Okay. And I believe the next thing I'll be, the next new thing I'll be bringing to you is some map changes. If you...
They're looking at them on Thursday.
Try to come to the Housing Committee meeting Thursday. We'll be looking at the first round of them then.
Great.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. You're working it late now. Jeez.
Okay.
Hey, Joe.
Yep, yep, yep.
7.0.
I think we're down to the director.
Jeff, so you're going to be there Thursday, right, at 10?
Yes.
Okay.
Director's report.
I'll just bounce off of what Joseph was saying. We have the Housing Committee meeting on Thursday of this week, on the 24th. And we're going to be looking at commercial districts, some of the maps and how those were laid out and where they were zoned commercial, where they're really residential and vice versa, and trying to clean them up. So that's going to go to Housing Committee first. You're going to see it probably shortly after that. I don't have anything else for the board.
Great.
Okay, who's going to, I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion, I have a second, do a turn, all in favor, say aye, opposed, say no, motion carries.